I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Cambridge City Council held on June 9th, 2025 here at City Hall, 80 South Superior Street at 7:41. We'll begin with the Fledge of Allegiance. I'd ask if Nan would lead us in that.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have the consent agenda before you? Any question on bills, sir?
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda, approve the current agenda, approve the minutes, approve payment of bills.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. We approve the consent agenda. Consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we'll begin with HECO engineers report. Robert.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the status report for June 9th of this year. It's pretty brief, only one item, page three, item E, local strategic initiatives program. On item E, item number 21, HECO submitted the Commercial Street one-year warranty correction period items on last Friday, June 6th. There was four items, working with Cory, that CSC needs to come and repair. We gave until July 1st, so unheard back from them, so we'll follow up with them. We will hear from them by Friday. And that's all I have for you, Council.
Okay. Any questions for Robert? Okay, I guess that's it. Thanks, Robert.
He has a nice drive for that.
Okay, item three, special use permit. Robert and Deena McCall, area of impact, recommendation to Washington County Commissioners.
I'll make a motion to submit a recommendation of approval to the county for the special use permit.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded. All in favor? Rule call vote.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison.
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Aye.
Councilmember Platt.
Aye.
Okay, item four, resolution number R1-2025, Cambridge Comprehensive Plan Updates to Chapter 3 Housing, Chapter 4 Economic Development, Chapter 5 Land Use.
So this resolution was prepared by the attorney to be able to pass those three chapters that we've been having public hearings and discussing for several months and stuff, because the comp plan has to be done by resolution.
I'll make a motion to introduce and read Resolution Number R1-2025 by title only under suspension of rules and regulations.
It's been moved in seconded. Rule call vote.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison.
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Aye.
Councilmember Platt.
Aye.
Okay, Resolution Number R1-2025, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cambridge, Idaho, adopting an amendment to the City of Cambridge Comprehensive Plan. Whereas the City of Cambridge Comprehensive Plan was prepared in accordance with the Idaho Local Planning Act, Section 67-6508, and whereas the Cambridge City Council adopted the City of Cambridge Comprehensive Plan on July 11th, 2016, and whereas the Idaho Code, Section 67-6509, allows for amendments to such plans, and whereas the Cambridge City Council conducted a public hearing on May 12th, 2025, on this matter, following duly notice and duly conducted public hearing procedures by said body. I'll make a motion to pass Resolution Number R1-2025, under suspension of rules and regulations, by one, on one reading by title only.
I'll second.
It's been moved in seconded. Rule call vote, please.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrison.
Aye.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Aye.
Councilmember Platt.
Aye.
Okay, it's been asked, item five, the Cambridge Museum Committee bylaws. Put on the back door, you're not prepared for us tonight. Item six, Sandra, we're ready to talk about that. I didn't, I circled item seven. I'm not sure if I, that we weren't ready for.
I don't have anything from the attorney yet on item six or seven. He's working on what we had talked about last month. He had slated some time this week to work on that, so hopefully we have it for the July meeting. But I do have a little bit on item eight.
Okay, so item five, six, and seven, we need to table till our next meeting. Item eight, setbacks for the overlay zone.
So a little bit regarding setbacks. Darren Brown came in and talked to me a little bit after our last meeting and had suggested maybe we want to consider snow, not just for keeping it on the roof, but for anything, and that might apply to our setbacks as well. So we might want to, you know, consider defining for anyone what the procedure would be for snow, maybe have a section on snow. So I wanted to bring that up to see if you wanted to work on something like that or not.
So whether we set up rules that it remains on your own property, or you're responsible to haul it off, or...
So my comment was, if you're going to move houses close to the property line, then you probably ought to just put in your rules that snow has to get addressed in some fashion by the designer or developer on how they're going to keep snow off other people's property. And that way the designer has to address those issues, so it's not pulling off on neighbors'.
See, my thought on that was that if we made those structures have composite roofs, that the snow would not slide, and it would stay up there and drip off, and so nobody would have to have any concerns about the snow. But then it comes to the driveways and stuff. What are you going to do there as far as, I guess that's what I thought you were addressing, was driveway snow and assuring that you're not putting your driveway snow on your neighbor's property.
That's fine, sir. If you think it's broad statement, or you do have options, just say, you gotta give us, you gotta tell us how you're going to keep it off your property. Then they can use different types of roofing. It doesn't have to be a certain type of roofing. You only need to put cleats on it, like him calling steel roofs, cleats, or, you know, just all kinds of different stuff. But it's by making it broad, because that's your real goal, right, is to keep it off the neighbor's place. If you make it broad and put it back on, then they can come up with the options on what they're going to do with it, was my thought, and that's what I suggested, Sandra, that they add.
And one thing on just, if we required composite roofs, that would be for the whole overlay zone, and that may not be whatever.
Existing properties that are already there may not have.
Right. And then, I mean, you're telling someone they only can build in one style. So I don't know if that's what you really...
Isn't that called an HOA?
Okay, you're telling them they're going to build one style, they're going to build it that way?
Well, but if they're not going to build it that way, then you're going to have other restrictions for them, you know, that would have to be designed differently.
So you really could just make a simple snow statement that you will contain your own, your own snow, regardless of how you do it. You just have to contain your own snow on your property, period in, in the story.
So we might want to consider a section in there.
Yep.
Okay, I'll talk to the attorney about trying to put a section in there. Then the other thing I wanted to talk to you about is we talked a little bit about off-street parking and stuff, and I looked at some codes around us, but a lot of people are like us. We haven't updated codes in a long way, and we say we have to have two. But I noticed that the City of Caldwell had a new ordinance that they just passed because they're trying to get more affordable housing in, and that are trying to do that everywhere and stuff. But one thing that they had changed on that's kind of new to try to help that is their driveway and garage parking space requirements. In their new ordinance, it says parking spaces on a driveway located in front of a garage shall be calculated towards the minimum parking space requirements, and parking spaces in the garage shall also be calculated toward the minimum parking space requirements for all residential dwellings that include driveways and garages. The driveway spaces shall be a minimum of 10 feet wide per space and a minimum of 25 feet deep, measured from the back of the sidewalk where applicable. The garage spaces shall be a minimum of 10 feet wide per space and 20 feet deep. And then it talked about off-street parking in the next paragraph. But we had talked a little bit, I mean, these are maybe a little bit different specifications. I believe our code right now is 20 feet, not 25, but...
Our code right now, if there's a drive, if there's a garage, it's 30 feet from the property line.
True, with the garage.
But, yeah.
But they do calculate the garage as one of the parking spaces, but only for residential. Commercials treated differently in their code. And so when you have a higher density area, that would give you a few more options. And then I know when Darren was in talking to me, he had, he showed me the place in Boise that they had kind of looked at when they were coming up with a possible proposal, and it showed a driveway, and all of the units had a garage, and then on the other side was a little grassy area with a tree. And they were all built that way with the tree in front. With our current ordinance, if we didn't include a garage, any small space, you know, with a higher density, you wouldn't be able to have a tree in front. You'd just have to have all cement, basically, with the higher densities that we've been talking about at the last few meetings. So that's something to consider.
Tree is nice, and it really looks good, but the tree eventually hangs over on everybody's property.
Yeah.
So that was my concern, was it, you know? So you got the neighbor guy who backed a trailer in his driveway, and that he had to back it through the tree, because the tree came down pretty low. So if we allowed a tree or required a tree, somehow you've got to place it so that tree is controlled by basically both property owners, because property is so small. Everybody wants to enjoy a tree and have the shade of a tree, but one guy's going to be super happy, and maybe the other guy might not be quite super happy, but...
Well, it's not like you guys would have to require a tree, but that would give options for people because of parking units. That's kind of what I was leading to the parking unit deal, because right now there couldn't be front yards with the higher densities.
Yeah, with requiring two parking spots, like you said, with requiring two parking spots, yeah, with solid concrete across the front of the place.
Yeah.
And the other thing to keep in mind is that when you put the driveway in there, you lose the, the street parking, because you'd be blocking the driveway.
Exactly.
So you're not really gaining an extra parking spot by requiring the extra driveway.
So if you count the garage as one space, it kind of...
It takes care of that problem.
Yeah, it takes care of the problem and...
It allows you an option to put a tree in front of it as well.
So we'd need to flex a little bit on that, as far as two available parking spaces, and make one of those include the garage itself. But I still think the 25 foot's where we need to be because of crew cab pickups over 22 feet long. Gotcha.
So is that 25 from the sidewalk or from the right, right away?
It'd be from the right away.
From the back of the sidewalk is what Caldwell says.
And that's a different number.
So ours...
So that would actually be 30, because the sidewalk's five, right?
Yeah.
So 30 feet from the...
The way our code is written right now, it's from the property, it's from the right away line, is 30 feet, so.
Okay.
See, in last week's, what we talked about was if you went from the sidewalk, that all that extra room that you're wasting in the right away area, if somebody's tailing another pickup, was parked in that area, it wouldn't affect anything. You'd still be out on the sidewalk.
Yeah, so, you know, we could change it to be on the back of the sidewalk, or, you know.
Well, we kind of discussed whether it'd be, I mean, would there be a sidewalk there? Or would it just go...
Well, eventually, that's the goal, right?
Where else is it? I mean, we've got Main Street with sidewalks, but where else in town is there?
Well, there's sidewalks on that street, both sides.
But the sidewalk would be against the curb, not against the right away, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So if it's right away, you've got a big old grass patch in there. So that's the difference.
Right.
But we need to write that into the overlay zone, if that's what we're going to define. And the same with the parking, we need to define it in our new overlay zone to have a section, one of those types of things.
That's what we talked about last time, right, is to go 12 feet from the right away and 30 feet from the back of the sidewalk. So whichever one's the longest distance, how long the driveways would be required.
Any thoughts?
Nope, just taking a win.
What was your drive, what was your spec? I don't have that sheet, I don't think. What do you design?
I thought it was 19 feet.
Yeah, 19 foot is what, what they had drawn up.
And I gave us 30 feet from the back of the sidewalk, if you'll use.
Yeah. Yeah, so their drawing was 19 feet from the right away line, and then there was sidewalk curve and gutter and an open area that made it 30 feet total from the...
But this wouldn't apply just to that property. This would apply to the whole overlay zone, any property, or any new property.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have anything. I mean, do you have a problem with one of the parking spaces being in the garage? I guess that's the question. And if you're good at that, you have to go around and inspect everybody's garage, make sure they keep a lid.
I'll want to hit it with my golf cart when I'm reading meters, you'll know.
Nope, I think we should go that way.
So does the council want me to contact the attorney about a snow section and a parking section? Are we wanting the parking section similar to Caldwell?
Yeah, I would, that's my opinion. Gene, what do you think? Snow, snow section in the parking section? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Can you say he's going to be working on that this week?
Yeah.
So, okay, let's do that. Okay, item nine, discussion on ICRAIM insurance regarding land use. That's really good. Excited about it.
As you see, I had a lot of questions for ICRAIM after I talked to a county commissioner, because that's how the subject kind of came about. I don't know if you guys are aware of all the lawsuits against the county at the moment, but there's one lawsuit that also, besides a suit against the county, names, I think it's five individuals individually for a million dollars in that lawsuit. And in talking to the county commissioner, I said, well, I thought ICRAIM covered those things unless, as long as you were, you know, followed your attorney's advice and followed the law. And they said they were told no, that, that it isn't covered under ICRAIM insurance. So I felt I wanted to make sure what the real scoop was on that. So the answer kind of is, it could be, but it's really not. So it says, if an official is working in their official capacity within course and scope, ICRAIM covers it if it's a covered loss. There are terms, conditions, and exclusions in the insurance contract that provide details on things we don't cover, such as land use, which is generally not covered regardless of whether they were named individually or not. So that means the city isn't covered, and you aren't personally covered. The city or county, for a county official, may still legally owe a defense for those individuals doing official business of the city if the insurance doesn't cover the claim. So in that other section, you might have read that the city may have to help you with your defense if you were working within your scope and attorney's advice and whatever, although part of the county's lawsuit is that, and they took the attorney's advice, that saying that the attorney's advice wasn't good. So, but if you go into what is an exclusion, land use is an exclusion, he says, "The general exclusion that is often applicable to land use claims, the title of the exclusion is eminent domain, but it encapsulates much more than simply eminent domain itself." Eminent domain, "the operation of the principles of eminent domain, condemnation proceedings, inverse condemnation, annexation, regulatory takings, land use regulation, or planning and zoning activities or proceedings. However, any such matters may be characterized whether such liability accrues directly against you or by virtue of any agreement entered into you or on your behalf." So basically, I think we need to recognize that land use stuff isn't covered. We need to make sure we are doing our due diligence and trying to know every aspect of land use law, you know, to try to cover yourself. But I just wanted you to know, you know, that ICRAIM may not cover that.
I think it should be the attorney's fault, and all of it should fall on him.
Well, one example that was given to me in Boise County, they had this come up, and the case, they lost the case in court, and it was millions of dollars. And Boise County did not have millions of dollars to be able to pay the lawsuit. So the county went to court to try to declare bankruptcy, and the bankruptcy judge said, no, you can't do that. You go back to your people and come up with the money to, to pay the lawsuit. Now, that was the part on behalf of the county, and that's possibly, depending if our county wins or loses, what could happen here, too. They may have to come back to the people if, if the lawsuits aren't won. But those are some things, you know, even all the years I've been here and stuff, I didn't realize that there's not much coverage for land use stuff. So, anyway, if any of you have any questions, you could get ahold of Justin at ICRAIM, too, and stuff. He's the underwriter. After they heard my question, they sent me straight to the underwriter, so.
Insurance companies are just so comforting, you know? We'll cover what we're going to cover, and then if we don't cover it, well, good luck.
Well, and I did ask, and I think it's in there somewhere, not my conversation, about other commercial insurance. And he said most other commercial insurance policies won't cover you for it either. So it doesn't sound like there's any coverage for it.
Okay, anybody have any questions about insurance?
Several, not today.
Okay, item 10. 2026 budget decision and fee schedule.
Need to go again?
Yep.
Okay, since it's budget time, and by next meeting, I hope to have a budget for you to consider. But I had a few things I wanted to know in being able to prepare the budget. First of all, should I prepare the new budget with a 3% increase on property tax? We've usually done that. I mean, it's not like it's a whole bunch of money. The amount of property tax the, the city receives is only like 60-some thousand. So a 3% increase isn't much.
We've done it every year for...
Pretty much, yeah.
The last...
Last several years. So is everyone okay with me working it up for 3%?
Yes.
Another thing in the budget that I just want you to know, the general fund's probably going to be pretty tight and stuff. A lot of the income that we get through the general fund is decreasing. It's decreasing all over the state. One thing that's decreasing is the liquor fund. We were more stable than some places last year, but it's, it looks like it's going to probably decrease for us a little bit this year.
People aren't drinking as much.
Since Smithville got a liquor license, or got a liquor store down there, it's taken away from us.
Stealing our business.
Yeah.
And the trend, I think, is, has changed since COVID, is what the state kind of has indicated in some places. I don't know if that's affected us or not. Also, sales or revenue sharing is down about 26%. Also, sales or revenue sharing is down about 26%. A year ago, let me see if I can find it real fast. Our quarterly, whoops, that's highway distribution. Our quarterly payments were 10,642. My last payment was 7,833, so it was down 26%. And it's expected to decrease this next year from that. So there'll be less money in that item. And, yeah.
Didn't let me quit drinking, hurt us down that much.
You know, and the so the trend in the state, you know, maybe our big boom is kind of slowing down type of thing. I mean, we still see a lot of stuff going on in the Treasure Valley, but for sales tax and stuff like that, it's slowing down. Some things I am going to make sure that are in the budget is a line item on the tap project, since we haven't completed it yet because we have a match and share, and on the first street line item. And I wanted to bring to your attention, we always have an item for the attorney, but in the last two or three or four years, we haven't had any attorney bills. Our previous, previous attorney, Steve Stuklich, never sent us the bill. He was going to for one item and never did that. He, he knew that small places had a hard time and he donated all of his time. But currently, we have a new attorney and that's not how it works. It doesn't work with most attorneys that way, so we are very fortunate. So anyway, before, we've always had it in the budget to be able to pay it because I, you know, I told Steve, send me, send us bill, we'll pay it, you know, because we did have a contract with him. But it's going to be real in the budget this year. Yeah, and it's, you know, it'll have to probably go up, the rate's higher now than what it used to be. So I just wanted to warn you that it'll really be used. Another thing we need to budget for is there's new Department of Justice requirements on our website. It's a good thing we went ahead and created a new website. I knew that the Department of Justice had put a condition on the counties to be ADA compliant by this year. And I hadn't heard anything on cities, but I just heard now that cities 50,000 or greater in population have one year till April 26th or something to come into compliance. And smaller cities under 50,000 have until April 26th of 2027. So we have a couple of years, but we will have to have our website totally ADA compliant. There's a few features now, but ADA compliance means, you know, if they want Braille, they can get everything in Braille. If they want it in other languages, they can get it in other languages. And, you know, it's got to be mobile friendly completely. And anyway, the Department of Justice has a whole bunch of requirements that it has to be. So that's going to cost us quite a bit more every year to come into compliance. I'm thinking we probably won't worry about it this year since we have another year, but the following year, we're going to have to budget that in, whatever it costs. So and then on your table tonight, I didn't have it ready for your packets because I've been working on it and trying to compare other cities and things, is a new fee schedule that I wanted to go over with you.
Yeah, I didn't print myself one.
I've got, I probably have yours, Sandra. You probably gave it to me today.
Oh, that's probably true.
Okay, so you can see in the fee schedule. And usually, we've redone a fee schedule to be effective October 1st with our new fiscal year. We usually pass a fee schedule at the same time we do our budget, so we can budget items in that way. Last year, we had the effective date actually of August 1st on some fees, so it was a little bit different. But I prepared this so that we can work on it a little bit in proposing that it doesn't actually go into effect until August, I mean, October 1st. So on the first page, I have some changes because I'd like to, instead of having a certain fee and then having to keep track of the cost and notification, mailing fees, ordinance preparation, publication, and charge people later after something's done, I'd like to do what a lot of other cities do and there's just a fee for it. And that includes all of that stuff. And then it can be paid upfront and sometimes, depending on what's going on, it's cumbersome to come up and keep track of all of those fees. You know, how many stamps did I use? How many this and that? So I'm proposing changes on the zone change application, the simple splitter, lot line adjustment, annexation, de-annexation, comprehensive plan change, and conditional use permit on that first page. And in looking at other cities, there's a few that had some, a few lower prices and a, but there's a few places that still have us, the old way we have it with the notification, mailing fees and stuff too. And there's some that had it where instead of $750, that it's $2,000 or $3,000. So there's a big wide range of fees out there. But we felt we needed to cover the costs of what it takes to, to do those different things. So I don't know if on that first page, there's any that you think need relooked at.
I did notice that the simple split or lot line adjustment was considerable.
Yeah, we kind of debated on that one because it was so cheap. But, you know, we just did one. And the amount of time and conversations we've had to have with people and going through all of their documentation and waiting for documentation and emailing feel people regarding it, it didn't, you know, it didn't even pay for an hour's worth of work. So we were trying to be a little bit more realistic. But it is a bigger increase. That's the biggest increase. Anyone good with the first page, I'll go to the second. Okay. I did change the variance too, just, and it matches pretty much what the first page was. And then we have subdivisions. And every city, subdivision's a different way, and it's totally confusing. Corey, did you come up with any other suggestions?
For subdivisions?
You know, we're
We really haven't done a subdivision in the city, so
Right, and I don't know if we want to keep it the same way with all, keeping track of all little things that add in later, because that doesn't give someone a true cost of what they can plan for, what it's going to cost. They don't know how much it's going to cost for notification or mailing or ordinance or publication, remapping, and all of those things. And so I didn't know if we should change that a little bit. Just come up with a fee on that. Don't know if you guys want to do studying a bunch of different towns. I've looked at a bunch of them, and like I say, they're all different in a wide range of fees. But one thing we did move from our previous fee schedule, I had on the front page was vacation and right of ways. And actually, that should be under subdivisions. It should be entitled vacate plat or right of way. And I, I have a fee for it under the subdivision one in, in red. But the rest of the stuff I haven't changed, that's in yellow. I wanted your input to know if there was a certain system you wanted to use, you want to old, old system and review the fees or?
Well, it's just because we were running our office in the red. Quite frankly, we, our fee schedule was so low that every time we had calls or had to do investigation on things, the time spent costs more than what the fee was. So we're trying to make it so the front office is being paid for. Because they're not giving grants for the front office work. So what are your thoughts? Other than what are we changing it for?
Well, I'm worried now. If I was Trump and just gave you my hundred bucks a month, would that help?
So where are other comparable cities on this?
Like I say, they're all over the board and they all have different systems. I mean, you go into, you have the city of Middleton's. Because I know we reviewed the city of Middleton's and the city of Fruitlands and stuff because there are two faster growing, smaller cities that have had a lot of extra growth. And, you know, they're way off the charts compared to what we are. You know, the city of Council or someone like that, and I don't know, you know, how they've reviewed their codes and stuff, is probably a little bit more similar to us, but they might have not, you know, updated how they do things. And then some of them include those other things, so it's hard to include their prices and some don't. So 1 to 4 lots in Middleton is?
So the preliminary plat application for 1 to 49 lots, Middleton is $4,200.
See, and they go from 1 to 42, and we go from 1 to 4 and 5 to 15 and 16 plus and, you know.
And then construction drawing permit application and public works inspection for 1 to 49 lots is $6,575.
When did we come up with this? When was the last time they did this?
Nan came up with this when she was mayor. That's been a day or two ago. And I'm not sure if you remember where you, we took it from. I don't remember if it was similar to a certain city or not.
That's usually how I, that's how I went this time again, so it's probably what I did.
But I don't remember what city.
Yeah, so administrative lot split or boundary line adjustment in Middleton is 550. Annexation zoning, 750. Comp plan, 750. Development agreement, $3,000. Special use permit, 750.
So some of the things on the first page are comparable. It's the subdivision that but some places on the subdivision, there's some big cost to build a single dwelling.
Oh, well, that's on the subdivision, that's on just building.
Oh, that's just the building, okay.
Yeah, like new residential building permit deposit, it's a deposit, $1,000. Commercial building permit deposit, $2,500. And then they do the actual building permit fees based on the value of improvement. So like how we do it. Then residential building plan review and inspection fee is 25% of the building permit. If somebody gets a permit after construction starts, we should probably do this. It's double the permit fee.
And I thought we did that with building permits.
It is. He was reading building permits, but no, we don't double the construction.
We don't double the fee if somebody starts before they get a building permit.
Might be something we need to review. So anyway, I'm not sure exactly where you want to go with subdivision. You want to keep it the same and try to find other towns comparable to the system you're using? Do you want to try to find other systems?
I think the, the part where we have to keep track of cost of notification, mailing fees, ordinance I think we need to get rid of that.
Yeah, that's the part that I'd like to get rid of.
That's a lot of labor cost.
Yeah.
But what it goes to.
Well, do you want me to rework something for next month and try to at least take in all of those fees to add to the fee and maybe just slightly bump the fee for inflation over the last? How long has it been since you've been mayor? 10 years or years?
And inflation's been incredible.
Because that would give you another chance to see it and you could tweak it next month before we have a public hearing on it for August. That was my hope, is we'd have the public hearing in August on it, like we're having our budget hearing.
Yeah, something like that I do. The accumulated inflation.
Okay.
Well, you've got numbers on everything else but the subdivision stuff, so.
Right, and that's what, I just wasn't sure what you guys would want us to do. I was so confused.
I wanted to do anything, it sounded like the city needs to do something. So I guess I need to see in front of me and see why or, you know, what it costs to do something like that. What your time and effort is to do it.
Well, on every case is different, so it's really kind of hard to say.
How do you level that up?
Right, you know.
Because I don't know. You just hand it to me and they hear you.
But on subdivisions, that's one thing we don't have much experience with. So
So the question is, do you want to have a subdivision handed to you tomorrow? And then our fees are a tenth of what they need to be, what it's going to take us to prepare for the subdivision. Well, that's what we're trying to figure out. We're trying to get ahead of the, ahead of the ball. So somebody comes in with a subdivision tomorrow, well, not tomorrow, but six months from now, we've got a fee schedule that will cover the expense of us helping them prepare for the subdivision with what it's going to take office time to cover.
Show us something.
So we're just trying to make it so I'm making red all the time. Like our sewer.
Well, I'll try to rework something up similar to what we have, but try to rework it a little bit.
Yeah, because I don't want to just pull a number out of the clear blue sky.
Well, and that was our thought. We were looking at places that are developing rapidly at this stage of the game and looking at their fee schedule, knowing that they're doing it all the time. They're doing it every week. So if we were in the position of having to do it, we know that the fees they're charging is what it takes to, to get it done.
Just saying double everything might not cut it.
No, I don't think so.
I mean, you can't do that.
Yeah.
We have some rationale.
Well, let's continue a comparison, I guess, and we'll
Okay. And then on the next page, I have, you know, a couple others that I You know, a couple others that I wasn't sure what to do, so. They're not technically under the subdivision. It's permits for public right of way and manufactured homesets. But I'll do a little bit more investigation on those too, to try to see what people are doing. Um, the next section is on water and sewer fees. I know our auditor suggested we. Try to do a small increase at least every year. We know that our sewer fund's still not making it. It hasn't for several years now. So this is the proposed five percent increase. But since we're going to be opening up the whole fee schedule and having a public hearing, because any fee you increase more than five percent, you have to have a public hearing. So we'll have a public hearing on the whole fee schedule. This could be opened up for a different number than the five percent if you wanted to. And one question Cory and I had is on the sewer rate, on the non-use rate. It's really low and like on the water rate, the base rate. So if it's in a non-use status is what the base rate is, they just don't pay the additional gallons for usage. Well, on the sewer, and I don't remember what the rationale was when the non-use rate. Uh, we can't find another city that has a non-use rate. And if it's the base rate. The base is supposed to be what everyone's paying into the system to be able, you know, because it takes millions of dollars to have a system, not the usage. So Cory and I are kind of wondering if we should not have a non-use rate on the sewer and maybe that's why our sewer fund's struggling so much too.
How many non-use do we actually?
Not that many.
Not that many, but there is some.
I don't know, it's a. The numbers always bother me because it's so small.
Yeah, so it's going to create some revenue, but not an miracle.
No. It's just one of those things that, you know, I don't.
But it really doesn't make sense if the non-use rate's supposed to be the base rate. You know, to be part of the system, why it's reduced so much for sewer and that's not that way for water. I mean, it is reduced for water. You're not charged on usage. You're only charged on the base rate. But. Anyway, those are the new numbers for water and sewer fees that are in red with the five percent. But I'd like to know exactly how you'd like to do that. Non-use sewer, if you want to just leave it how it is, or if you want to consider something else.
I think we need to bump it up.
I probably have a conflict of interest.
Well, I'm sure that there was, there used to be some residents in our town that. Had their water and sewer turned off all the time, but they'd go around town and get water from everywhere. And they were still using their sewer because it was going down their sewer, even though. Their water wasn't coming through their own pipe. It was coming through the neighbor's pipe.
It's a lot of work.
Across the street doesn't even have a.
We just not go down to that new.
Yeah, I think that's, I think we'd be wise to adjust that sewer.
So should we just have it at the base rate?
I, that would be my opinion, but whatever the council has an opinion of it.
Because like I say, we haven't found another city that has a non-use rate. I mean, we could do some more studying on cities if you.
I would say my place in Nemeos was, it was a base rate too.
Didn't go down. Didn't turn it to an off stats. Okay.
So you want to get rid of the non-use. Rate there and just have the base rate and that's just what it is?
Do they actually charge people? I mean, some of you say they don't have it listed as a.
No, it's just the base rate. They don't reduce it. So if you want, if you want your water in an off status, your water will go down. Because the sewer stays the same because we've all got to pay for the sewer to get them down there.
There's no chance for using it.
Well, you wouldn't have a connection unless there was a structure there.
Yeah, you would. It's exactly what I have.
Where?
Across the street. There's no, there's no sewer in that shed. Used to go to the house. The house is gone. Been capped off, but I want to maintain it and not pay for.
I would take the cap off and use it.
I'm sticking it out to the ground.
You could dump your RV there, right?
You know, you gotta use it. Lucky you.
Might have to.
That way you never have.
Build an RV dump.
You didn't never have to pay connection fee because you're there. Anyway, Dora, how do you feel about sewer connection?
Let's go forward. Let's pass it and go on.
Okay.
And you want me to stick with the five percent?
Yes.
Okay, um, the other thing that we're proposing to change is the new application fee for services from fifteen to twenty five. Most other cities that I looked at were twenty five. And, um, we did get rid of charging that fee. When it goes back into the owner's name between owners and tenants. So the owners and tenants thing, uh, you know, they don't have to pay every time it goes back and forth. Um, so this would just be new applications and. And that would help cover some of the costs to get everything set up. And then under the miscellaneous fee, um, I know some other towns charge more for a check return fee, but I looked in state statute today and it still says twenty bucks, so. I was going to leave it the same.
Is that still a thing?
Well, yeah, we just had a non-sufficient funds one last week. Um, and then watering sewer connections. We're looking at changing those. I don't think Cory's quite come up with something yet.
Not yet.
But what we would like to do is to have a fee like a lot of other cities do that. That have the cost of installation. Ours are a thousand dollars plus actual cost of installation. Well, the problem is that person has no idea how much it's going to cost until the end, so it's hard for them to budget. It's hard for us to. Always get it collected when it's way down the road. You know, and we don't really have a policy on it type of thing. And so if we had a fee like a lot of other cities do where it just costs, this is how much it is for water sewer connection.
The connection fee is the fee for being connected. Because we ours, like for example, our last connection, how much in parts do we have? Down in the hole.
You're still fighting over it, ain't you?
No, it's taken care of now, but.
Not happily.
We had close to four thousand dollars in parts.
Yeah.
Eh, thirty, it was about thirty six hundred dollars in parts, just because it was two inch stuff, but.
Yeah.
So they all vary, so maybe we could have a different connection fee for different sizes of connections and then we had thought about.
There was, um, I can't remember what code I read, but they, so they have a base connection fee for water and sewer. Were their standard size, so ours is five eighths to a quarter. And then they were saying that they go up. By a certain multiplier for each size to go up, so you know, like you go up to a one inch. I don't know if it's the same multiplier as, you know, what we have for the the usage part of it, but they were talking about a multiplier. I'll give you an idea on. Middleton, so their standard. So their sewer connection for five eighths, three quarter residential, just for the sewer connection is fifteen thousand dollars. Yeah, and their water connection fee is forty two hundred and sixty three dollars. And then, uh, I mean, they go all the way up to four inch sewer connection, right?
For a single place or is that like a subdivision?
That's a single place.
That's a single connection.
In halfway, it's fifteen thousand dollars. I go up to the civic sewer.
So like if somebody came in, uh, now, when they say four inch sewer connection, it's not a. They're talking about the four inch water line going into the building. And so they got, you know, four inches of wastewater coming out. It's not the size of the pipe, so that's. Senator and I got a little confused on that, but they had a four inch water service coming in. Right? So they're going to pay for the four inch multiplier. It's two hundred and ten thousand dollars for a sewer hookup in Middleton. I'm assuming that four inches is going to be something like a big industrial plant or something, you know, like that, that's going to need to just, you know, get rid of that, but.
What we were thinking is maybe, you know, going up a little, but trying to get all the fees in there and maybe we could put a clause about paving. That because it's hard on each individual one. Sometimes you have to pave, sometimes you don't. Sometimes you pave a little, sometimes you pave a lot.
I've only done two since I've been here and Martinez, your neighbor behind you.
And so maybe we could put a clause and the actual cost of paving. So if there's no cost of paving, they wouldn't have to pay for paving. If there. Was a cost, they could just pay the actual cost of paving. And so maybe that part of it could be done on the fee later, but.
Seems like too many variables to me to figure out.
Well, we're trying to eliminate variables and just set one fee for the whole thing.
Yeah, but I understand that, but with too many variables, when you're actually doing the work and something happens.
Well.
I guess if you kid on a meeting, tell me lose money or something.
Can you show us what the last two costs to do?
Yeah.
I mean, not for a second, but like.
I was going to say Mike's, um. Was eleven thousand, six hundred seventy one dollars.
Did that include the fee?
Uh, twelve thousand, six hundred seventy one dollars. Um, and that was for his water and sewer. So it would have been thirteen thousand, six seventy one. Um, and then Martinez's with the. Thousand dollar fees was forty six thirteen, but they were five years apart.
Were they the same distance?
No. No, they weren't the same distance. Um. The more expensive one though, went through. Asphalt and across every single utility we had in commercials, so.
And that's what I'm talking about. I just think we should leave it the way it is because. I mean, you could. Gain some or lose some real fast. Or if someone messes that or I mean, then you're fighting, I mean.
So you want to say the standard connection fee of a thousand dollars plus the expenses to hook it up?
Yep.
And we just need to be, make it clear that it could cost ten grand.
Two.
Well, the, the problem. The problem that I run into is that. The two that I've done, they want to know what it's going to cost to. Install it before it gets installed and I have to rely on the contractor to give me a quote of what the digging is going to be.
That's everywhere you go.
What about a deposit?
Every contractor's got a different price, an hourly price, what they're doing and.
Maybe it require a substantial deposit until.
Well, the hardest part is we saw, said, well, you know, this is what our previous one was, but we didn't know how extensive it was until. You got all the factors, you know. Involved in it and stuff. And then they said, oh, that's way more than I thought it would be and stuff and had a problem with it. And so we thought maybe it'd be more fair if they had a little bit better idea upfront.
Very so much.
Well, the last couple of times, it could be anywhere between three and twelve thousand dollars.
I mean, people have drilled a well and thought it was going to be eighty feet and it'd be four hundred feet.
So you want to keep it how it is and maybe just relook at the connection fee?
Or maybe.
To see if it's that what most are including.
The connection fee is there as as an administrative side of it, correct?
Yeah.
So that's.
So can we cover administration with that thousand dollars?
We can. I mean, that's the logistics between, you know. Getting it, you know, scheduled and organized and knowing where they're going to put, you know, like having a site plan where they want their water and sewer to come in and. All that stuff and the, you know.
Getting a hold of contractors and scheduling it all.
I mean, we could, I could figure out, you know, roughly, I mean, I know. I mean, for the most part, everything that I put in the ground for water sewer doesn't really require a whole lot of hard parts, but the water does. You know, and it's, I mean, it's. Well, on Martinez's, it was just over a thousand dollars in parts, you know, that we put in, including the line, the setter, the meter. You know, the fittings and all that.
But if we keep actual cost of installation, that's not going to matter.
Well, if you put it in our vocabulary, when we tell them the thousand dollars connection fee and it could be up to twelve, fifteen thousand dollars, the complete project. We tell them right out of the gate. When they first ask, so there's, you know, it could be fifteen grand. And then if we can do it for ten, awesome. We're all American heroes. So.
And then they'll come back with, well, I need to budget, budget for fifteen.
There you go.
So when you, when you actually do work, are you just paying somebody by the hour to install it or are you getting prices from somebody?
Well, that's exact, I mean, you can have anybody do it. I mean.
Well, I.
Who's to say? He's a lot, Darren's.
They, they have to be able to, they have to have insurance to be able to work for the city, yeah.
Darren saved himself a lot of money if he did it himself.
Well. The last thing is, can you do like a bid from a contractor, like, like to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, that's, that's what I do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so it was a different than what they priced it at?
No.
So can't you do that before you tell them what the fee's going to be? Get the price before you tell them that?
Yeah, I, I, I tried.
We were waiting on parts though, too. We didn't have a price on all the parts.
But why wouldn't the contractor be responsible for that?
Well, because we start, so historically, this is how it's been for water, it's your connections. The city supplies all the parts. Right? And really, we have a contractor come up that digs the hole. And then, you know, the city gets down in there and hooks everything up, just that and the other. There was a handful of issues with the last one that we did in. Not knowing what size they wanted to begin with, then changing their mind and then not being able to get a contractor to get me a bid. And there was just a lot of things that got lost in translation and so that's. The last one was just a mess. I would use other words, but I can't.
Kind of like the guy trying to do the hookup is not doing their part in a commitment, so why shouldn't the city commit to a number? If they're not doing their job, their part.
Deciding on the size and all that beforehand.
Yes, they can't commit to that, why you guys commit to a price?
No, and I never did, and that was the thing. I never, I was like, well, I need to know what size you want because that's going to change what it costs is.
Well, let's just double check that basic connection fee, check around and see if we're in the ballpark on that and then we can. Leave it at cost plus.
Yeah, and I can, you know, like I said, I can, you know, figure out the parts and pieces, kind of get an idea price wise of what that stuff is. And just kind of go, well, approximately this. Or this.
Just go high every time, go high.
Well, we made the mistake to say our last one costed this and it wasn't anything like the new project.
I did reiterate though, that that was five years prior.
But they didn't hear that part.
That was before COVID, so. Pre-COVID pricing versus after COVID pricing.
So you guys wanted to leave it how it is or?
Well, we just want to check around and make sure that connection fee. Well, we just want to check around and make sure that connection fee is in line with everybody else, and then we'll go cost plus after that.
Okay. And I think that's the only other changes that are in the fee schedule. The rest of them I kept the same.
Did you want to add, this is for the building permit, add the, if they start building first? Double, double the fee.
Well, it probably doesn't go under fees, but, well, it would fees, but we probably have to get that section first ordinance, or to be able to charge the fee for it.
Yeah, and then we can keep the second half of that and then have to give 65% of it to the building inspector. Now, the other one, I thought we had talked about the temporary use permit fee for RVs bumping it to 75.
Yes, that is on the next last page, a change.
Mainly that's because we usually don't get people that come in and say, hey, I want to live in my RV for six months. So we find out about it later on from phone calls, and we got to talk to them, get the permit, and we got to tell them when their time is up and.
Just you're constantly monitoring them and you have to call them and tell them.
And we have all the calls from the neighbors that are telling us and.
Yeah. So it's, it is quite time consuming, just to keep track of who's camping in their yard and who's not.
You can for two weeks without a permit.
You end up on the news. Anything else on fees?
I did look to see if we could put our alcoholic beverage fees and stuff in our fee resolution because I saw a couple other towns that did when I was doing some comparisons. But in looking at state statute today, it has to be done by ordinance and not resolution, so I'm not sure how they did that, but we'll keep it in our ordinance, but we'll probably relook at that too, because they haven't, they've only been changed once since I've been here, and that's probably been about 15 years ago. So we probably need to relook at that.
Okay, item 11, Blue Cross of Idaho, 2025 Community Health Academy Grant and Acceptance, and she put my name by that. But since Brandy here is here, I'd love to just pass this off to her. You're so awesome.
We applied for a $20,000 grant from Blue Cross of Idaho. This is not health care specific. It is a community grant that focuses on your healthy community. And what are you doing to keep your community healthy? And so with this $20,000 grant, you go through a program. It's a monthly meeting. So we had a monthly webinar in May. We will go down to Boise in June. And they just take you through a series of what other cities are doing to keep their communities healthy, the walkability. They talk about bicycles, safety, you know, if you're bicycle friendly, if you're not. And then a whole host of other things, senior centers and your school district and early childhood education. So it's a huge host of discussions and topics, and they'll take you through this class. And then at the end of the, in October, they'll help you, help us come up with a plan on the best way to spend that $20,000. So once you're accepted, it's kind of a guaranteed $20,000. You just have to be, you have to come up with how you're going to spend that that meets their scope. So I think this would be pretty cool. It's been fun to learn about different walkability communities and how they use that. We specifically signed up for it in hopes that maybe we could upgrade our restroom facilities at Water Tower Park. $20,000 doesn't mean you can't touch that, but it gives a, it opens a door for future grants from this program. So once you go through the initial program and you're accepted and you come up with the first grant on how you want to spend it, then it opens up the door for next, for grants for just the people who have gone for the program. So it's kind of a narrow window where you can receive future grants. So it actually has way more potential than I realized when we signed up for it. So, yeah, I think it, I don't, we don't really know exactly where we're going with it or how we're going to spend it, but it's pretty broad.
You're going to find out.
What?
You'll find out.
We'll find out, yeah. I keep you updated as we go and as we learn what other communities have done. They have funded a comprehensive plan in the past, a daily comprehensive plans. They have funded, like Weezer has a exercise area in their community park. They funded that. I'm pretty excited about it.
The city of Weezer got additional funding besides their exercise deal in the park. They were able to fund sidewalks that came down from the high school. They had a little bit of a tap grant, but it wouldn't get it cleared down to Memorial Park, so they were able to use Blue Cross gave them additional funding for sidewalks down to Memorial Park. And they did a pavilion and a bunch of other remodeling in their park. So Weezer was one of the cities selected for extra grants type of thing. And then the other thing I might mention too, it's not necessarily just us that'll kind of decide. They really emphasize going out to the community and asking what the community sees as the needs. And so they'll probably, we'll be taking community input too to get ideas. Because maybe there's things out there we haven't thought about yet.
Yeah, there are reasons that you have to, with your community. So it's very interactive and we're just getting started.
Excellent.
Thank you. Next item. It's been voted in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Proportional carries.